Hey, a reminder that while many restrictions have been lessened, please continue to wear your masks and socially distance from one another. We will again take public comment from those in person and from those on Zoom tonight. We also did have an executive session this evening prior to the meeting, and that was regarding personnel. Are there any announcements from our student reps this evening?
There are no announcements this evening.
Okay, thank you. And public to be heard on agenda items only. We'll start with in-person first. If there are any comments, please come up to the podium.
Michael LeBerginsky, 2005, will would drive Richard commenting on Agenda Item D3, which proposes the use of Title II funds for consulting services to help the district with the quote creation and implementation of an inclusive excellence plan. For those not familiar with Title II is the U.S. Department of Education Fund, which is designed to quote, "One, increase student academic achievement through strategies such as improving teacher and principal quality; and two, hold local educational agencies and schools accountable for improvements in student academic achievement." The Title II program description of the state Pennsylvania State Department's website states that quote "Title II is 100% federally funded supplemental education program that provides financial assistance to improve the skills of teachers and quality quantity quality," excuse me, "of instruction for core academic subjects." Can someone please explain to parents of the board how an inclusive excellence plan helps achieve student academic achievement in core academic subjects? The agenda description indicates $10,000 in consulting services being awarded to a gentleman as part of the district's diversity, inclusion, and equity initiatives. What exactly is the goal of the planned inclusive excellence plan? How will the success of this plan be measured? Is the board completely aware of this plan? Mr. Jackson raised a question in the last board meeting regarding attendance at a workshop for culturally responsive teaching, which is a well-known euphemism for the inherently racist and divisive critical race theory. How much district resources are being dedicated to these initiatives, especially at a time when the district is over budget and raising school taxes 3%? The board should be crystal clear on the goals of this program. Misallocation of Title II funds, if reported to the Department of Education, could jeopardize the district. Therefore, I strongly recommend the board consider this proposal before voting on it. At a minimum, I would expect the board members to ask reasonable questions and engage in debate before voting on this proposal. Thank you.
Well, we will take that under consideration. Are there any other comments in the room this evening? Do we have any public comments on Zoom related to agenda items? Oh, is there somebody here? That's fine. Can you please state your name and address for us before you speak? I'm having trouble hearing him on the mic. Hold on, hold on one second.
Thank you. My name's Anthony Frigo at 1,003 Main Street, Lynnville, Pennsylvania. I would like to preface this by first thanking the board for being here. I understand you're not paid for this. I did write a letter today that was circulated upon you. It's not on the agenda. However, I'd like to know when it will be on the agenda.
I think, could, could I ask you to please hold your comment till later? Because we do have an agenda, and this public comment section is specifically for items that are listed on the agenda. However, later in the meeting, there is public comment on a variety of issues that you could bring to us at that time that are not listed specifically on tonight's agenda. Would that be okay for you to hold that comment?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. On the Zoom, Rich.
Kelly German, please state your full name and address. Unmute yourself, please. At this time, we have no more hands raised.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then. We have a few action items this evening. So I would like to take A through H. They are related to resolutions honoring our students for their many accomplishments and awards from the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those motions carry. And then we'll look at I. I do have adjusted language to share with you. For letter I, administration recommends approval of an independent contract with Crystal Stubbs, certified school psychologist, to provide psychology services for the 2020-2021 school year and the 2021-2022 school year. Services will be provided for a total of 35 hours per week for 27 weeks at a rate of $70 per hour. Funding will be paid from the special education budget and shall not exceed $66,150. Is there a motion for I?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Then J is referencing technology equipment for grades K through four. This was explained to us in detail by Mr. Catalano at the last curriculum and technology meeting. Is there a motion for J?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments?
Could we just be reminded of the number of devices and the types of devices?
It's approximately 600 Chromebooks and 600 tablets and approximately 100 carts. This will provide a device for every student in grades K to four.
Thank you.
Question, is this part of the, which these are grants are these part of? Is this coming out of the grants we already received or had access to or the new grants? Because I know the kind all comes together, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, S or three?
Three. And what's, what's, do we know the total of that grant? Okay.
And further questions or comments? Do we want to move forward with the vote, Molly? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. We'll take that further clarification when it's available to Mr. DeVillo's question. Moving on then to presentations. We have the recognition of the eighth grade boys' basketball team and their coach, Richard Harrison, for their undefeated evening tonight, or undefeated season.
Thank you, Mrs. Zasowski. First, I would like to mention and say a few things about the teams that we recognized. The meeting I missed due to I was home ill. So if you don't mind, if I just may say a few things I would have said that night. We recognize the seventh grade girls' basketball team for going undefeated. They were five and oh. During their season, they scored 127 points, averaging 25.4 points per game, allowing only 65 points for an average of 13 points per game. So their average scoring differential was a positive 12.4 points per game, which is remarkable. And you'll see a consistency through all the teams we're recognizing tonight and the ones we recognized two weeks ago. High school girls' basketball finished their season 24-1. Some highlights from team records. Most consecutive wins to start a season, 24 in a row. Offense averaged 59.3, a record, school record. The defense allowed 32.1 points, a 27.1 point differential. They held opponents to 30.4% field goal percentage while we were shooting 45.2%. We averaged or outrebounded teams on an average of 31 to 22 every game, forced an average of 17.3 turnovers while only committing nine turnovers per game, and set another record by turning the ball only over only four times in one game. So they're all school records that the team set this year, and that's not the entire list. Individual records. Lucy Olson became the all-time leading scorer in school history, whether it's boys' or girls' program. She finished her career with 1,699 points. And she also holds the record in a season, scoring 543 points, which was last year, and she'll continue her basketball career at Villanova University. Abby Boyer set a school record that's really dear to a lot of our hearts, a career record in taking charges. She took 22 charges during her three-year varsity career. She set a school record, taking three charges in one game this season, and last year set another school record by taking 11 charges in one season. If you know Abby, 5'3" is stretching it. So she was willing to put herself in harm's way for her teammates. The high school wrestling team, you know, again, what an awesome season this group of young men and their coaches had. They finished with a 14-1 overall record. And in the pack, they scored 592 points while allowing only 106 points. So they averaged every match 59.2 points to the 10.6 they allowed up for their opponents. So their differential was 48.6 points per match in pack wrestling. That's one of the reasons why they won the championship. They also were the first-time Southeast Regional Championship and the winner of four postseason team championships. That is a school record by any sport. And I like to mention a few things about Joey Milano and Jack McGill. Jack is our all-time Penn's career leader with 93. He also accumulated 148 wins during his high school career, and he'll be continuing his education and wrestling career at Columbia University in the fall. Joey had 128 career wins and probably missed about a season and a half with injuries during his four years. He is a three-time state qualifier, three-time state medalist, and he will continue his academic and wrestling careers at North Carolina State University in the fall. And by the way, the school record for wins is 150 by Brandon Meredith, who went on to Penn State to wrestle. And Jack had 148, and we had a shortened season due to COVID. And Joey had 128 and again missed that, that about season and a half. So they would have had their full, which comes with sports, injuries and whatever it may be. Now, tonight, we have two special groups with us tonight. We like to recognize we're going undefeated. First will be our eighth grade boys' basketball team. We're asking them to come forward and stand here, social distance in the center. Mr. Harrison is the head coach. He could not be here tonight. He is currently coaching our baseball team down in Ram Stadium against Potters Grove tonight. So Mr. Shukta, who is the ninth grade coach and will have the opportunity to coach these young men next year, is in here in Mr. Harrison's place. The eighth grade boys' team finished the season eight no and scored 400 points with an average of 50 points per game, while their stingy defense allowed only 212 points or an average of 26.5 points per game with a positive differential of 23.5 points each game. Understand, eighth grade games are shorter than ninth grade games and high school games, and them getting 50 points a game is pretty amazing. They scored a high of 64 in one game and 63 in another. And while two games, they held their opponents in the teens to 14 and 18 points. So congratulations to our eighth grade boys' basketball team for their undefeated season and coach, head coach, Mr. Rick Harrison. Congratulations, gentlemen. Ninth grade, are they out there, Mr. Shukta? Come on in, ninth grade. Stay about six feet in front of them. Okay. See, bow ties are still in. The ninth grade boys' basketball team, head coach, Mr. Mike Shukta. Mike is a Springfield grad who played varsity sports or varsity basketball here, by the way, for four years, and at one point was our all-time leading scorer until Mike Brock surpassed him. The ninth grade boys also copped an undefeated season with a record of eight no. They were also very efficient on offense, scoring 430 points for an average of 53.75 points per game while allowing only 234 points, which comes to an average of 29.25 points that they gave up per game. Their average point differential, 24.50 per game. They scored a high of 71 in one game and then 60 in another. And I would bet to say that 71 is probably a school record, Mike, if we look back on it. While in two games, they held their opponents in the teens to 16 and 19. So congratulations to our ninth grade boys' basketball team and head coach, Mike Shukta, on their undefeated season. Before you leave, I just want to jump into the spring season right now and let you know that our boys' track team is the 2021 champions. Cameron Moore is the pack singles champ. And at the present time, and I'm hoping to get an updated text from Coach Brennan, Cameron and John Prigene are in the finals of the pack doubles. They've qualified for districts next Friday. So I'm hoping we can get a final here and have another champion. Gentlemen, if you could all do me a favor, just turn and thank the school board and administration for their help. But more importantly, when you get home, you have to hug and kiss your parents and tell them how much you appreciate what they've done for you. Because someday, if you don't realize it now, you will down the road realize how much they've done for you. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. McDaniel, for that very thorough report and for updating us with the information from the last time and for bringing these two groups in tonight to be in front of us like that. It's quite a commendation. And we also have some, another award this evening, Ishaka and Dr. Collier. I believe for our next presentation, we'll be presenting the third quarter students of the month. And do we also have Allison on Zoom? Ah, there she is. Okay.
Good evening. Thanks for having us tonight and allowing us the opportunity to represent our students of the quarter for the third marking period. On behalf of the high school administration, it is my pleasure to recognize these four students. First, we will start with our ninth grade student of the quarter, Eli Vivian. Our 10th grade student of the quarter, William Corey. Our 11th grade student of the quarter, Nina Aquilante. And our senior student of the quarter, Alexa Prince. Again, on behalf of the high school administration and all the teachers, congratulations, students.
Congratulations to all of you. I know that that's a little bit different of an award, and we're really glad that you brought that to us and that you do that at the, at the close of each quarter. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Colleen, I just want to, I want to remind, this student of the quarter came from Ishaka and Jules Lilly as from the student rep. So this whole, this whole thing was, you know, came out of the student rep program. Ishka, you were involved in the beginning of this, right? And, and I think it's been, I mean, this is our second year into it. I mean, I think it's been a great program. You know, it's, it's driven by the students and through the ambassador program that they also recommended that we put in place. And it's so great to see these students each quarter that get this recognition. It's so well-deserved for each of those. So it's a great job by all.
I'm also happy to see that they're wearing their jackets that to, as ambassadors for the district, but they are getting some good use. So I'm glad to see that.
The ones that Clinton and I were going to buy if they need it.
Yes, that's right. Okay, and with that, we're going to move into board and committee reports. Mrs. Fazini for curriculum and technology.
Okay. The curriculum and technology committee met on Tuesday, May 4th at 6:30 PM. We started out with two exciting announcements. The U.S. News and World Report came out with its best high school rankings for 2021. Springfield was ranked 990th nationally out of 17,857 schools and 31st out of 711 in Pennsylvania. Curriculum shared a student spotlight video of Taylor Campbell. She's a bright young Springfield cyber student who also took classes at Monco, and she'll be able to attend college in the fall as a sophomore. It's a great example of how this Springfield cyber school can be used for our students and our families to meet individual needs and provide educational advantages. Under curriculum, Dr. Moyer gave a presentation about the English language learning program. It's the legal responsibility of the district to provide a program that teaches English to those students whose first language is not English so they can access and succeed with the Springfield curriculum. Currently, Springfield has 136 active English learners, 64 monitored English learners, and four who have opted out of the program. He presented an overview of the program, the services provided, and the exit process. The program is funded by Title III funds and is supported in many ways by the MCIU staff and resources. This program is an important example of the benefits that we receive by being a member of the MCIU. Dr. Moyer submitted a proposal to offer a summer in-person tutoring program for the EL students who are most in need of, due to lost learning due to the COVID pandemic. 25 students have been identified. The program would meet twice a week in person for six weeks from July 21st through 31st. Oh, that can't be right. I'm not sure what the dates are. In July for six weeks. The cost is not to exceed $20,000, and this is all covered by the ESRS funding. Dr. Murray shared an update for the professional development for staff through a micro-credential academy. Springfield is working to be more creative and strategic with Act 48 Professional Development. They're planning on enhancing the options by developing a catalog of courses structured to support different groups, cover different topics based on students' and educators' needs. There's a professional development task force that will be conducting a needs assessment to direct this course development. More will be coming on up about this. They're working on it as we speak, and this is to be funded by Title II funds. Dr. Rockland presented an update on the professional development of Springfield cyber learning. There will be two sessions. The first is ingenuity training and a cyber orientation session required for all cyber teachers. The second will be a canvas and course building training for any teachers who want to build a cyber course. 60 teachers have indicated interest. The cost of this will be covered by Title II funding and ESRS funding. Details and plans are being finalized. We're still determining what this will look like, and there should be a presentation will be given at the next board meeting. The intent is to have it finalized for board approval in May so that training can be completed over the summer. The following annual renewals are being brought forth for approval for curriculum. Renewals are paid out of the curriculum budget and our annual budgeted expenses. There's NWEA MAP renewal, discovery education, and NearPod. There are also new purchases of Title I resources for the elementary school and intermediate grades from various vendors. They're funded by Title I funding. Under technology, actually, we approved it, but seventh, I just wanted to let you know, seventh and eighth grade Chromebooks have been deployed that have arrived. The older devices are being collected, cleaned and repurposed it, repurposed it and being distributed to the elementary buildings to be used in classroom carts. Technology department is moving forward with the technology plan and purchasing the devices, so all five through 12 students will have an assigned device, and K through four will have dedicated carts for the classrooms. All the costs are eligible for COVID ESRS fundings. This process is utilizing the grant money to greatly accelerate our existing long-term plan so that Springfield can meet the technology and device needs in the event of a necessary closure. This item is time-dependent. That's why it was brought, it was on tonight, and we already approved it. We need to order them right away so that they can be deployed before school starts. The following software and contract renewals are being brought forth for the approval for technology. All renewals are paid out of the technology budget and our annual budgeted expenses. There's Smart Panel Project, RWA and renewal, that's the Internet Safari montage, E-Rate renewal, Assessment Builder renewal, Performance Tracker renewal. And that was it. So the next meeting will be Tuesday, June 1st at 6:30 in the high school principal office or on Zoom. Any questions?
I did find out that the 950,000 that, that we're approving for the.
ESRS.
Yeah, it was, that's 950,000 of the 4.4 million that we already been, that we have been approved for.
Right.
So it's good that those funds are being utilized.
And I, and I sort of just wanted to point that out. I think I covered that. But there aren't a lot of large-ticket items that we can use this grant money for. And to be able to use that grant money to greatly accelerate our technology plan is a really good use because it, that saves the taxpayer dollars from it being used. And, and it also accelerates the program so it doesn't take five years to do that.
Mr. Catalano had also said that any event that we would ever have another catastrophic shutdown or something like that, that devices would be able to go home with those students. So we are facilitating continuity and learning, I believe, by also doing this.
Correct.
Well, as Ms. Fazini pointed out, this is all part of the long-term plan to integrate technology with curriculum throughout the entire district. And we're just.
And we're able to use this.
Accelerate it, use the, use the funds. Right. And I think, I want to point out also that you threw out some numbers earlier, and I don't, I'm not sure if we really understood or, when you talked about the latest rankings, well, you know, when you find out that Springfield, out of 17, almost 18,000 school districts, you know, high schools, whatever in the, in the United States, when we come in at, in the top 5% in the country, that's an incredible achievement. And we have been moving and being ranked nationally as considered one of the top school districts and top high schools throughout the country for the last several years. And, and you know, for having and getting that recognition just demonstrates the hard work by administration and staff and teachers and everyone involved, that their hard work is paying off. Because I know where we were several years ago and where we are today has been a big change. And we always say, that's great for this year, but where are we going to be next year? But because of that, with those rankings and all that and that, and this recognition, Springfield still is considered one of the hottest school districts in the county. We have, you know, people are trying to get into this, into the school district. Real estate that sells within a day to two days max. I mean, it's just amazing what's going on. And it's attributed to the school district and why it's such an amazing district and why people want to be here. So I just wanted to, you know.
Yeah, and that U.S. News and World Report is basically its majority academics, which is really very impressive. But we also have other pieces, like our music program, our arts program, our, you know, the athletics. I mean, we have all these other pieces too that are just really part of it also.
Well, our STEM program was recognized as one of the national, one of the top STEM programs in the country as well. So I mean.
That is part of the piece of U.S. News and World.
But it's just, it's just, it's just a demonstration of how, you know, I know sometimes it gets frustrating, you know, some of the things that we deal with, you know, at these meetings. You know, at these meetings, but when you sit back and understand the ranking, the national recognition that we're achieving here at Springfield. And to see, you know, we had the decision day last week. And when you start to see the colleges that our students are going to, colleges, universities, trade schools. I mean, the diversity that's going on with our student population across the country. And the programs that they're going into, it's just amazing. I mean, we are really truly setting our kids up for success here at Springfield.
It really does come back to the rigor. And if you look at the schools that the kids are going to, they're doing, they're able to do that. And they're able to be successful there because of the foundation that they've received here. And so we do owe that to our administration and our faculty for making that happen. And I just want to correct you, Mr. DeBello. You said a couple of days for the purchase or the sale of the house in Springfield. I think you meant hours.
Actually, it's true. It is.
Indeed, it is.
But if you would look at the builders, and you guys now love the building side of the world. Every major builder has one thing at the top of their sign, Springfield Schools. We should start charging them, we should start charging them a percentage for that, a point. We should.
I'm going to get to trademarking in a few minutes. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Fazini, for that thorough report. I'll move on now to community relations. And in this meeting, there were a couple of technical issues that were addressed. One is the Tricaster update. You'll see that the Tricaster update, there's an M on the agenda, a request for some funding to replace the Tricaster. The Tricaster is essentially the computer that runs everything RCTV. It is an encoder, a decoder. It streams to online platforms and holds the digital plugin for all RCTV cameras in the district. It is the brain of the operation. The old Tricaster will move to the mobile production studios. So it'll move to the trailer. The unit in the trailer is 10 years old and at the end of its life. There will be a noticeable upgrade. Sorry. There will be a noticeable upgrade in quality coming from the mobile unit. We work with Applied Video Technology AVT to run cables for this project, which is a summer project. They designed the studio, and they will be making the wiring and cable updates with this project. The PTZ cameras, new PTZ cameras will be used at board meetings and could be used at any event without a camera operator. Similar to the HUDL cameras, but a student or program advisor would actually operate the camera, the camera from the control room, like a remote camera. We've had some unmanned cameras at times during the year, for example, at some board meetings. In the Boardcast Production Curriculum, Major Two students are required to work one meeting a quarter. Rather than two students running cameras, one will run the camera and the other will learn to direct and run the PTZ camera from the studio. $45,520 of this project has been covered by the Educational Foundation, EITC money. The remaining funding is going to come from capital reserves and not to exceed $30,000. That is a slight change on the agenda where it was 25. The final numbers came in closer to 30. These projects would have moved forward anyway this year as scheduled, and we're lucky to have received such a large amount from the EITC funds to offset some of those expenses. So in addition to that specific technological information, which I hope you don't have too many questions on that I cannot answer. But I will refer to Andrew. I do want to let you know, the education, or I'm sorry, the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee and and its role with Community Relations, the five, six, seven grade center, and I mentioned this before. The social studies teachers there have been working with students on a multicultural virtual field trip. The field trip will air on RCTV on May 13th. Last week, the Springfield Student Subcommittee held an alumni panel, the class of 2012, then and now was an opportunity for students to dialogue with former students and hear about their high school experience, how they have transformed into their current work, and how they overcame perceived and experienced obstacles. The next panel, an administrator panel, will be held on Wednesday, the 19th after school. This will be an opportunity for students to engage in a dialogue with district administrators regarding how a more inclusive curriculum is developed in each content area. The recruitment of a more representative staff are hired through our HR department and how the district is cultivating a community of equity, diversity, and inclusion. All areas that were referenced for growth from our student survey administered in February. And regarding the trademark, there is additional work to be done. It will take place over the summer. Onto a few other newer items, the final site renewal. It is time to update that, and we will be updating our district and school homepages. They will be powered by resources and posts on the backend. We will see design enhancements on the homepage and school pages, including more frequent use of video and pictures and updated fonts. Our renewal will include the final site composer CMS or Content Management System, 50 gigabytes per school of cloud storage, hourly integration from Skyward, an active directory, modules, alerts, forms manager, et cetera, faculty and staff portal, student portal, and parent portal. There is a new app for the iOS and the Android. The committee discussed upgrading the current app to include centrally managed calendars, athletics, news and images, videos and docs for use on the website and in the app. The app would be available, as I said, on the iOS and the Android, and the cost would be $2,500 annually. So their recommendation was to move that forward to, I believe, to curriculum and technology for recommendation on that. Same is true, I believe, for the Weglot translation where visitors can select the language from a language picker picker in the lower right-hand corner of the website. There are 100, more than 100 automatically translated languages to choose from. So it does provide greater access. And that cost is also $2,500. And then the newest addition would be the Skylark edition with the newsletters. This is part of our existing Skylark system. We would be adding the newsletter feature to Skylark. And then that newsletter would be able to go out to all of the members of the database. This feature does not replace the stationary feature, but works on its own separate future feature, and there is a one-time $2,839.20 fee. That is each year, one time, I'm sorry, that is for one year. There is no setup fee. There was a setup fee. We asked Ms. Crew to go back and negotiate that. There is now no setup fee on that. So the committee does recommend moving the Tricaster project forward. So you will see that on tonight's agenda. And the committee does recommend moving final site and the Skylark renewal with those other options as discussed to curriculum and technology for recommendation. Okay, and that was, that was our meeting. It was very technical. I have no answers on the cameras, but I am sure I can get those for you. Any, anybody else with a legitimate question or comment at this point? Okay, moving on then to Western. Western was a review. I think, Mr. DeBello, you were not able to be there that evening. Is that correct? Okay, Mrs. Earl was there. I was there. I would say it was a review of where we are currently similar to other reviews that we have been given. But the biggest takeaway that evening was there was a discussion about enrollment and ninth graders and then 10 through 12. And one of the questions I had asked was, well, what happens if a ninth grader comes in? Are they going to have the same curriculum presented to them going forward in 10th grade? Would they have the same thing? And what I was told, what we learned is that they do work to differentiate the instruction for those students that come in at ninth grade. So with that in mind, I think it's important to share that with people so people know it's not going to be the same exact level instruction. It would be enhanced. It would be differentiated, and it would give more time for co-ops and that experience later as they master the skills, perhaps a little bit sooner than their counterparts. Mrs. Earl, did you want to add anything to that report?
No, thanks.
Okay, are there any questions or comments related to that? And if not, Mr. DeBello, do you have anything for MCIU this evening?
Yeah, I mean, at the, we met last week. And meeting was very similar to a lot of previous meetings as far as taking day-to-day business and approvals. But the one, the one item that, that I do want to point out was that if this board remembers a few years ago, the Harrisburg School District went through some very tough times, and they were being managed by Department of Education in Harrisburg. And if you recall, they weren't successful at all. In fact, they were, the school was failing on every level. We at the IU, and as this board recalls, I also sit on the executive leadership committee at the IU, were asked to take on the management and of the Harrisburg School District. And we've been in a three-year recovery plan. We call, you know, we basically put a recovery, we call a recovery pump in place because it was to bring the Harrisburg School District from the low marks to making it appealing school district and get it to the levels where like any school district needs to be at. The principal or the superintendent of that school district, the Harrisburg School District, came and gave an update during that, our last IU meeting. And he, we're proud to hear that all the areas are improving on or ahead of schedule. Areas include getting the finances in place. Academics are starting to come back, and the kids are starting to achieve better scores. Professional development is underway, and the staff, there's new staff that's come in. There were staff that needed to find a different opportunity somewhere else in the state, as well as there were retirements. Just with professional development, there was a lot of things that were taken that local school districts, including Springfield, what we're doing with our professional development and being utilized there now. We also took on a challenge of upgrading and getting their technology in place. So this is basically, and I'm trying to say it in a nice way, but the Harrisburg School District was pretty much a failing school district in Pennsylvania. And now is moving in the direction of not being a failing school district, but actually moving, like I said, in the right direction. There were a lot of, lot of changes that needed to be put in place. There was a lot of issues that needed to be resolved, but through IU leadership and the executive committee leadership, the Harrisburg School District is on the road to recovery and becoming a better performing school district within the state of Pennsylvania. And just the other thing I do want to point out is, like a lot of school districts, the IU as well has put in place a diversity, equity, and inclusion steering committee. They start to conduct their meetings, and they begin their work to look at how the IU can improve practices while also looking at opportunities to support all the member school districts in this important work as well. So there's a lot of good that's happening throughout Montgomery County, and there's going to be more to come related to that topic as well in the future. That ends the report.
All right. Thank you. Questions or comments? All right, Mr. Schaefer. PSBA.
Good evening. Thank you. So great news. That's always fun, right? This coming school year, 2021 School Leadership Conference, the combined PSBA and the PASCAC Conference is planning on being in person. So I'll pause for that, let that soak in with excitement. It's going to be held. Mark your calendar September 27th through the 29th. Here's another big date, Mr. Rizzo. Call for presentation. Application deadline is June 18th. Now, before the world stopped, I think we were keen to at least apply for a few areas. So, you know, if you're not familiar with how and where, I'd be happy to get together with you at another time so we can review.
More, more good news. They shared that information with our leadership team last week. So they're already working on so many proposals.
My report is no longer valid. Thank you. No, but so single topic or roundtable. So you're on it. That's great. Can you, do we know what you're thinking of, or should we just?
Not yet. Let's, let's give it a few more days to marinate.
So that's September 27th through the 29th at the Kalahari Resort in the Poconos, and I expect Springfield will be represented there with, with a, you know, a progressive and leading presentation on some topic. So that concludes my report. Controversial, Mr. DeBello, yes.
Yeah, I just have one comment from Mr. Schaefer. Don't try and get one up on Mr. Rizzo.
I love it. Actually, that kind of made my night that you were already, and not surprised, by the way.
All right. That's wonderful news. That was my question for PSBA. Okay, Mr. Rizzo, it is your turn as acting superintendent.
Thank you. Just an update on where we are with COVID mitigation orders. As you all know, early last week, Governor Wolf announced the lifting of the orders. And while this information is exciting, as it does mark the entrance into a new phase of community connection and normalcy, it does come with a few caveats. The order goes away on May 31st, but the health code remains, which is where the language regarding contact tracing, quarantining, and isolation resides. According to Montgomery County Office of Public Health, we will still be required to contact trace and quarantine close contacts with no revised definition of close contacts. The masking order is still in effect, and they talk about that 70% of 18 plus being vaccinated before that gets lifted. It is impossible to know who is and is not vaccinated in a crowd, which does add a layer of difficulty for our staff during our interview events. And while although not mandated, social distancing is still strongly recommended. And while we have not, while we have taken efforts to maximize spacing between students, just a reminder to the board that we really only have guaranteed three and a half feet in our buildings, which remains the expectation for the duration of the school year. Title IX Climate Survey. The Springfield Area School District is conducting a series of campus climate checks to obtain feedback from students, faculty, and staff about the many aspects of sexual harassment, such as awareness of existing programs, knowledge of how to recognize it, and more. This work is very important and will be helpful to the district as it works to keep our schools as free as possible of sexual harassment, including assault and violence. Next week, students in grade seven through 12 will be sent to Title IX Climate Survey. The survey is optional, and all responses will be anonymous. Parents wishing to preview the survey may do so by going to the Title IX page of the district website under Human Resources. There is no opt-out of the survey since it is just an optional survey. Office of Civil Rights does require the district conduct a series of climate checks, and this particular survey has been approved by the OCR. Parent Advisory Committee, the board, you know, asked for some information on the parent advisory committee. So Katie Davis, she's one of our special ed supervisors for grade seven through nine. She's taken the lead on this, on this initiative. She's attended a two-day patent workshop on family engagement. She is working on gathering information from other school districts via speaking with other supervisors and reviewing district websites. She is planning to gather information via need assessment from our families this year regarding how to best solicit parent input. Two ways she's doing that with parent focus groups and a Google form that will be administered by the end of this year, focusing on areas of interest and modality to receive information. She's working towards building a more robust parent resource hub on her website for parents and guardians of students with special needs. She's creating opportunities for parent meetings throughout the 2021, 2022 school year, either monthly or quarterly, which could include things such as a virtual Q and A type session, similar to some of the sessions we posted this year, provide in-person meeting opportunities. She's maybe looking towards bringing in some guest speakers throughout the year, considering providing up, maybe considering providing opportunities for student groups to get involved in assist with childcare to increase participation in our meetings. So that's where we are as an update with that. We're very excited about what that might bring for us. Lastly, I have for the board. I want to thank you for approving and your commitment to our students by approving our 2122 school plan. What this does for our community is allow us to move forward and take a proactive approach toward doing what is best for our students. So much of what we have been through has caused us to be reactive this year, and I've mentioned that before. In terms of getting started, we are really quite, quite a bit ahead of the curve. So I'm meeting this week, this Wednesday, with the steering team and subcommittee co-chairs to discuss our needs and considerations for next year, and further meetings may spring forward from that strategy session. We're analyzing each need that I mentioned at the meeting two weeks ago by prioritizing based on a one-to-three system with one being the highest priority and three being a nice-to-have. As a cabinet team, we met last week to discuss the steps required to utilize the ESRS funds, and we'll continue to discuss to ensure we follow the prescribed steps. And as normal, I will continue to update the board weekly on, as we move forward. That's my report. Mr. Rizzo, I just want to thank you and the whole parent advisory. Mr. Rizzo, I just want to thank you on the whole parent advisor thing. I brought that up two meetings ago and it sounds like the progress is, as I expected through your leadership is progressively moving. And I anticipate that is the goal to have a functioning advisory group in place by the, the start of the school, next school year? Or are you, are you trying to do something, do you think there'll be something sooner than that? Or what's your, what's your foresight on that? So the end of year kind of brings along a lot of activity. So it's more about gathering information from our families to see how best to serve them in the next school year. So our first meeting, we're looking to be the beginning of next year. That's great. And if we could keep giving, having updates, even if we have a section on the, on our website, providing updates to parents, letting them know that as we're progressing forward with that initiative, I think that would be really great. So I think that, and having guest speakers and all that is, there's a lot of, you see a lot of work has been done already. So that's great. It's all coming together. So thank you for that. You're welcome. Happy to do it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Rizzo? Then do we have Nurse Smith on the Zoom?
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Just to give you an update for numbers, since the last board meeting, the nurses have processed 27 positive cases since we last met. 10 of those positives were potentially infectious at school. And so that led to us having to contact trace and quarantine 75 individuals in those past two weeks. And that's all we've got, unless you have any questions.
And in the realm of things, could you tell us the numbers improving? Do you feel the numbers are improving? What is the situation in the buildings?
We do. We do feel that we're seeing fewer cases. I guess right around spring break, we were really busy. And then after about a week, things settled down a little bit. And it's pretty typical for us with, if you're going to take an average with each positive, to have to quarantine about six to eight other individuals as close contacts. So those numbers still look big, but our number of positives have decreased. So we're feeling a little bit of, of a calm, which has been nice.
All right. Well, thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Nurse Smith?
Nurse Smith, please confirm the number of nurses that we have in the district, please.
We now have, we haven't all started, but we have 18 nurses in the district. 10 are CSNs and eight are RNs.
Thank you.
I had a question for Nurse Smith. If, if there's a, like a senior or junior who has gotten the vaccine and they're two weeks, two weeks past the second dose, do they need to quarantine if they've been a close contact?
No, they don't. And we are tracking that. We've asked any parents or students who get vaccinated to send us their, their cards, copies of their cards. And we are putting it into our system so that we can track that two-week mark. And then as long as they have no symptoms, they can stay in school.
Thank you.
All right. Good news on that front. Thank you for joining us tonight. And Mr. Fitzgerald, do you have a solicitor's report for us?
I do. And briefly, I just want to remind the board as we head towards June 30th, we're supposedly supposed to get a state budget. I think in years past, we've gone like almost 300 days past that, so I'm not holding my breath. However, it's noteworthy that along with the potential of a budget by the end of the fiscal year, there are no less than, I think, 11 school code bills that are pending out there, along with multiple changes to the Right to Know law and a number of areas that they're potentially addressing with the charter school law. I think the charter school issue may be coming to a head in part because if you've been reading, the governor about 10 days ago effectively fired the Charter School Appeals Board. If, if you understand what the appeals board does, they are officially the gatekeeper for the approval or denial of all charters throughout the state. As it stands, right now, there is not a single member of the board to hear either renewals of charters or any new applications, except for one individual, and that's the Acting Secretary of Education. So I think with issues we've talked about here for, for many months and the fact that we don't have a functional charter system, I think we may see some, some interesting developments over the next 45 days.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions or comments from Mr. Fitzgerald? Okay, with that, then we'll move on through the agenda. Minutes A, any questions or comments? Personnel A through I, questions or comments?
Oh, I have a comment on A2. Can, can we object to that? No, I'm just kidding. I, I just wanted to say how much, Mrs. Fern, we appreciate you. And although work that you've done and how much help you've been to me personally and as a newish school board member, and I wish you every happiness.
Ms. Fern, I think there are going to be many comments as we get closer to the time, we'll call it. Any other questions or comments on A through I? Finance A through M, I want to point out with M, it is up to 30,000, not the 25 that's listed here. It will be fixed by next week, yes, before the, before the voting, or two weeks. Then I just wanted to ask about E with the budget. Are we still at, at 3%? What is, what is the status there?
We're, as directed by the board, we're at 3%.
And the board wants to continue to move forward with that?
We'll wait now to ask.
It's a question. Okay, we'll move on to programming and curriculum, A through N. Questions or comments on A through N?
Yeah, I have a question. It actually is really directed to Mr. DiBello on some of the contracts with the IU, J, K and L. Can you talk to us a little bit about the, the benefits of the IU and the negotiations that go on for this type of purchasing that we can do as a consortium?
Not understanding your question. What do you?
Shouldn't a question go to administration?
Yeah, I'm not.
I mean, it's, Mr. DiBello doesn't make these decisions. He's our liaison.
Okay, well, that was just, since you was aware of the functions of the IU as our liaison, I was thinking that perhaps you could answer it, but certainly.
I said I'm not following your question.
My question is just to have an explanation as to why the benefits of purchasing the, working at the consortium with the IU, how that all works.
Well, it's pretty straightforward. They, the IU goes out and they negotiate best pricing with these different groups or these different consulting firms or technology providers or whatever it may be. And like any, anytime, any district or Springford perspective, when we go out to purchase something, we check with the IU to see if the pricing that they have already pre-negotiated and their buying power makes sense for us to continue working in that direction or we go out and get pricing ourselves. For instance, in the past, the IU has negotiated transportation pricing and tried to bring a group together to use all the same bus company. But the work that we do with customers and the pricing that we get from customers' garage, it was better for us to stay outside of that, as well as the, they have a consortium in place for healthcare. But our healthcare, our self-funded insurance is, is our pricing and all that is much better than if we would have been part of that. So it's like anything else, we, we, throughout the district, and I agree with Mr. Schaefer, why did the, the school district decide to go with those three through that, working with the IU? That would have to be Mr. Rizzo's perspective, but I would suspect, well, the E rate comes from the state as the way I understand it. So it's really J and K. And apparently that was the pricing, negotiated pricing through the IU that it made sense for us to work with the IU and get that pricing from that perspective than going out on our own.
So just a clarifying question on your question. So you're not familiar, was your question about how educational service agencies support school districts? I don't understand what the, sincerely, I mean, I don't.
I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
The IU, if I understand, I'm just confused. The IU, like why, why, what, what's the purpose of an IU? Is that, is that your question? They negotiate on behalf of, I mean, in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, they, they negotiate, it's typically county-based in the more populated counties. I would think you, you know this. That's why I don't understand why.
I was asking for clarification, not just for me, but for the rest of the board and for the community. That's all.
Hey, any other questions or comments? Related to, that was programming and curriculum. Moving on then to conferences and workshops, A through C. Questions or comments? Other business, I'm going to break that down. A are policies that are on for a second read, one through 13. You also have B, and I believe we did something similar before, when we did this with a student who was requesting permission to personally transport or the family was requesting permission for this, for them to personally transport their student from the child's home to the approved trip in Orlando. We did that before. There are parameters in place for that, Mr. Fitzgerald?
We've done this a number of times in the past. And I do recall within the last year or so, we've had something similar in, in a similar arrangement.
So that's not an unusual request?
It is not.
Okay. And then we have one for Mr. Fink and one for Mrs. Fern on there also. Any questions or comments related to any of those four items under other business?
Quick question, although we're very upset to see Ms. Fern leave in September, but she's duly well-deserved to enjoy her retirement. How would this work from a board secretary standpoint as far as us of? Because I believe that's June 30th, we always appoint a new board secretary, right?
Yeah, you, you're.
Right, so if, it's, I guess, do we, could we appoint a temp, temporary board secretary? Not necessarily as Ms. Fern, but could we appoint a temporary until, until her position is filled in the future? Does the, the person doing her job becomes, I mean, I'm just trying to understand how this would work with her.
It, it's a one-year appointment for the secretary of the board.
Excuse me, Mr. Fitzgerald, it's a four-year appointment.
Oh, excuse me, four-year, four-year.
This is the, this is the year that board secretaries are elected.
Then we could likely, have we, do we, didn't we approve at one time and, well, like an acting when, when you were out for, for a particular reason? We could, we could do that, subject to filling it permanently. So I would have no, the person you would ultimately hire for, would fill the four-year, four-year appointment.
Well, that's, well, I would think that's what we would end up doing. I'm just asking, there's a, there's a difference between June and September. And Ms. Fern's right, it's, it's a multi-year appointment. So, so I guess the answer to the question is that we could have a, we could appoint a temporary board secretary for a period, do we have to put a period of time or we just say appointed a temporary?
Subject to the board permanently filling the position.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for the clarification. Moving on to board comments, my question for Mr. Rizzo is if there is any update on graduation tickets?
I believe Dr. Coller sent out, Collier sent out a notification last week to our senior families that the number is not going to be two initially. When we were in the middle of our pandemic, we didn't see where we could comfortably have more than two tickets per graduate. We now know that number can be a little bit higher. We are somewhere in the four to six range. It really comes down to how many we, we can comfortably fit. We still need to be cognizant of social distancing to a certain degree. And we also have to be aware that there are some families that still lack some comfort in crowded spaces. So to try and consider, you know, how many we can offer and still provide what families need to be able to be comfortable is what we're working through right now. But we know that number is going to go up beyond two, for sure.
All right. We'll take that for now and look forward to hearing more definitive information when it is available. But I thank you for that. Is there any other board comment this evening?
I just clarification on the, so if the, I just need that, I'm just, you know, I'm sure this will get twisted somehow, some way, but I'm just asking for a clarification question. I know what you're going to ask. Right. If, if, if the, if the restriction for capacity is lifted, when I read through it, I might have missed it, but I don't believe that there is still social, for outside, social distancing that still needed, was still required. So I just want to get clarification so that we make sure we're communicating the right thing. You are absolutely correct. And that's, that's, again, that comes down to required versus recommended. So social distancing to a certain degree is still recommended. We don't want to just kind of willingly say, okay, everybody come on back in, we're all good and jam-packed. By the same token, we also acknowledge that there's a lot of people that are vaccinated that were outside. So there are some things we're working through, but, but to your point, our capacity right now in our stadium is 4,590 seats or whatever that actually is. If we would give six tickets, for example, to each graduate, that gives us a total number of, in the ballpark of about, oh, doing my math, about 3,700, maybe 3,800, that gives us some space. We might be able to go up to six. We could go up to seven per, per graduate. But again, if we have a small contingency of families that still want to, still want to have the option to be there because their graduate, their child is graduating, but they still want to have some space. Do we allocate a section for people that want to have some space? Those are the things we're working through. But you're right. As far as a mandate is concerned, social distancing is not mandated at all. It's an issue of just, you know, do we want to provide an opportunity for those that might not have some comfort? And I'm not, I'm not questioning that at all. I'm just want to make sure that the message that we're delivering is not conflicting as far as what's being stated by the governor and what's coming out. And what's being stated is that outside, the capacity mandate is lifted and there is no mandated distancing. So if we want to still provide some, I, I, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just trying to make sure that we deliver the right message so that people understand, you know, that we're not instituting our own mandates that are, are outside of, or different than what's being done from the state, because we've always followed the state and the county. That's correct. So I'm just want to say that, I'm just want to make sure that we continue to do that. So if the mandate's lifted, then we don't, we don't want to institute our own mandate. Fair, yes.
Has the county weighed in at all? Because I do recall that, that the lifting of that mandate was contingent upon the county kind of requirements and that the county decided to maintain that same tightness, you know, over occupancy, they, that we would still be obligated to.
Sure. So that's a good question. And, and we all found out about it last week at the same time. And we were all sorting through what that actually meant for our end of year events. And there wasn't a whole lot of clarity. They're still working on getting clarity right now. Montgomery County is saying that they're going to follow the Department of Health and the, and PDE's recommendations. So that's kind of where we are right now. But again, we're going to get, I just got an email today, we're going to get another update tomorrow. Mr. Fitzgerald, can you add to any of this?
Well, I think it was actually rightly described at this point. And this is true of, I think, a lot of things, both in the short term, such things as graduation. And I think in the long term, we're going to see that government oversight over what we do will likely be more a local decision now. We're going to get far less mandates for various reasons, but this will all be at our discretion, how we want to define what mitigation efforts we want to put into place at this point.
So Mr. Rizzo, what metric, just throwing this out for overall analysis, what do you think we're going to use to determine a separate group so that it's segregated, for lack of a better word, for the rest of the body? What, square footage or? It's a really tough one for us to gauge. We don't really know yet. We just, we just know that we want to at least consider it. We don't know what that looks like yet, though. But we are working quickly and daily on it.
Mr. Rizzo, a quick follow-up question. Do we know how, how many tickets were given in years past?
We, six, six has always been the max. Going above six is a little scary for us in a normal year. So we never really anticipated going beyond six, but six has been, I believe, our standard in the past.
Yeah, because I always had to trade and find, and I knew six was the max.
You're saying there's a secondary market for tickets?
There is definitely a block.
There is definitely a black market. I've dealt in it three years running, and this will be the part.
It's the hottest ticket in town.
I just, quick comment, I missed this. I just wanted to acknowledge administration and faculty for the summer Rams program. Administration for putting this together, and for the teachers that have signed up for it. I once was told, I'm not saying this, that the three best reasons for becoming a teacher were June, July, and August. Pause for giggling, anyone, faculty, nothing? All right, so thank you for the 40, I'm sorry, 56 that have agreed to come in and work over the summer and, and help our kids. I just want to say thank you.
It's an excellent program that's coming together for our students, and it's, you know, it's his first, it's the first start to that whole learning loss and everything that we've been talking about, as well as additional resources that we're going to be looking at for next school year, the deal with the social emotional. So things are starting to, and it's, and like I said, it was presented curriculum, and it's just all kind of coming together, and it's, it's really, again, Mr. Rizzo's leadership is just really phenomenal in this area as well.
All right, thank you for.
Now, I would just like to, to say that I had the pleasure of attending the Teacher Impact Awards last Wednesday, right here. And maybe, Mr. Rizzo, you can talk a little bit more about it, but it was, it was really lovely to see so many of our teachers honored by our students. It wasn't the event that it normally would be because of COVID with Emil and things like that, but it was really, you guys did a wonderful job honoring our, our teachers. I think there was about, it was about 200 of them.
Yeah, it was very, it was very, it's a very exciting evening. So the idea of the Impact Awards is that students that are graduating, seniors, they, they identify a teacher, a staff member, a custodian, anybody that has really impacted their lives in some capacity. And, and then that's, and I think how in the, and that individual gets recognized, and the student comes along with them. So it's a really powerful evening. The fact we were able to have it in person in this space was really, really pretty exciting, and there was a lot of energy in the room, and they rotated all around, they were all over the place. It was very, very cool. We, we were safe, but we were definitely social, so it was a good time.
And the pictures from Impact and also from Decision Day have been out there, the links have been out there with all of those. It's just heartwarming to see the smiles on the faces and, and people celebrating their children's accomplishments. So it's great to have that, those opportunities to do that, and I know that there are more coming as well. Okay, any other board comment this evening before we move into public?
I got a couple of things. I feel like there's some misinformation that's circulating in our wonderful community regarding motions, and I want to try and make it pretty basic so everyone understands it. I can make a motion right now that we terminate Mr. Fitzgerald's contract. It's not on the agenda. I could justify it, but it's not on the agenda. I can make a motion that we stop Zoom and just stay with the live streaming. It's not on the agenda, but I can make that motion and justification. I can make a motion that we stop using laptops and go back to pencil and paper. It's not on the agenda, but I can make that motion with justifications. So I want everyone to understand, every motion is not on the agenda. And I've heard a lot of this misinformation going around and around about this. So every motion is not on the agenda, and those are three motions I can make right now that's not on this agenda. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Then we'll move on to public to be heard. I believe we do have someone in the room, thank you for holding your comment at the other time. Please come on back up to the podium there.
Good evening, Anthony Frigo again. I circulated a letter today, apparently there are BLM stickers in the school, in the seventh grade center. I have no comment about BLM, but I don't believe it is appropriate that such things are in the school. I believe it's unconstitutional, violates the First and Fourteenth Amendment. And I was wondering what the school would do about that.
This is the first I'm, I'm hearing of this, and I will share this with Mr. Rizzo and Mr. Fitzgerald to see what course of action, if any, can or should be taken in relation to that.
Are you saying like a bumper sticker or something?
No, I believe it's a sticker on a door to a classroom. And I also believe that there's not a sticker about the Constitution next to it, nor one about the Declaration of Independence, which is what the school should be teaching.
So your preference would be we just remove the sticker?
Excuse me?
Your preference would be we just remove the sticker?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm seeking redress, I'm not seeking
I don't, I don't.
Punishment here.
I don't disagree with what you're saying. It shouldn't be there any more than a conficker flag sticker or anything else. It shouldn't be in the school district, so I support your position
Thank you.
requesting that it be removed.
Okay, and I will hear the results of this at some point.
Mr. Rizzo, do you have, do you have this individual's contact information?
I do, yes.
If you could address the issue.
I think Mr. DeBello knows me.
And then share that.
Yep, you got it.
Pardon? I believe that you know me.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo is going to address that situation, and then he'll follow up with you with that.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Sure. Any other comments from anyone in the room?
I do want you to come back to school board meetings when, when you don't have an issue, okay? All right.
So Michael Abadzinski, 2005, will drive, just before I start my public comment, just a point of order. I don't recall hearing a vote on any of the proposals, finance, curriculum, et cetera.
Not this evening, it is a work session. There were some action items in the beginning that we did need to address. Other than that, there will be motions for the other items that we just reviewed at the next meeting.
Okay, I stand corrected, thank you. I'm here tonight to talk about undeserved trust and its impact on our students. On the heels of last week's updated CDC and Pennsylvania Department of Health mask guidance, Chester and Delaware Counties, which share a common Department of Health, announced that masks are now optional for athletes when training or competing. School boards, including Westchester, Neshamity, Council Rock, Central Buck, Sauterton, and many more have voted to make masks optional for athletes as well. Despite this, Springfield student athletes are still required to wear masks. Why? Because Springfield is following the outdated guidance of the Montgomery County Health Department. Why hasn't Springfield followed the lead of many neighboring districts that have proven they can safely compete without masks? Is the compliance with the Health Department justified? Let's examine if the county has been honest and forthright with Springfield deserving the trust. In an email dated October 14th, 2020, Montgomery County Commissioner Valer Kuch asked for case numbers for public school sports COVID transmission. Michelle Masters, who you will recall was a guest speaker here in the fall, when she interrupted our board chairwoman three times, responded that only 12 cases were found in a count, over a period of six weeks, stating, and I quote, "These numbers are not as powerful as I was hoping." Seriously, not as powerful? The person in charge of disease prevention and control in our county, the person advising the Springfield Board and Administration, says she's disappointed that the cases weren't more numerous among our athletes. But that lack of substantiating data did not discourage Commissioner Kus from lying to school districts. In an email to Upper Dublin Superintendent Dr. Steve Yanni dated October 29th, only 15 days later, Commissioner Kus states, and I quote, "I'm hoping our community will cancel all indoor gatherings and even be more careful with sports. These are our two highest-risk activities." Highest risk? This completely contradicts the data that her own team provided her. And finally, in an email dated the same day, October 29th, Denise Wallen asks if there's a plan to close schools over Thanksgiving. Michelle Masters responds, "Not at this time. We are not seeing transmission in our schools. There is a concern that if we move schools to virtual, we will see a higher number of cases because of the need for parents to work and kids to get together," unquote. Yet despite this clear position, and you're two weeks later, both Valer Kus and Michelle Masters attended a Zoom call with the county board health, the same meeting that Mrs. Asaskey attended to defend us, and made statements that directly contradict their own data and own concerns. The board administration should think about whether they should continue to trust the advice of people who have lied to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald, I got a quick question for you. Even, even though Chester and Delaware County has made decisions because it's a, it's a joint Department of Health within the, the, our Montgomery County Department of Health still has not made any changes from a mask mandate, correct?
As, as from my last review of this, which was last week, is no.
So we, no matter what our personal feelings are, one way or the other, we still require to follow those mandates as, at this, as, at this point, correct?
Yes, and also whatever the, the PAC has decided to do and what they're.
Well, I'm not, the PAC is a whole other, I'm, I'm just talking about.
In, in short, you, you will be guided by Montgomery County.
Right, so we, even if, I mean, even if we wanted to follow the lead of Chester and Delaware Counties, we're, we're limited to as far as what we can and cannot do from a school district standpoint, based on what Montgomery County is putting forward.
That is correct.
Okay.
When, when is the county, or do we know when the county is planning to meet again and have these types of discussions? Do we, do we know that at all?
In, in terms of when they might change it, that, that tends to come out of, out of the blue. They don't necessarily, the only thing they really advertise, and they really had trouble with that, was back in November when they decided to mandate schools to close for two weeks. But other than that, they really just issue something, and then it's, it's new.
And that's what we've dealt with consistently for how long now?
15 months.
Thank you, I was, that was rhetorical, but thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald, okay. All right, are there any other comments in the room? Yes.
I'd just like to announce that Cameron Moore and John Purdean, Purdean are PAC doubles champions.
Nice, congratulations. Okay, and, oh, we do, go ahead, please state your name and your address.
Hi, good evening, Erica Hermans, 204 Abbey Drive in Roersford. So one of the key responsibilities that is entrusted to a board is the hiring of a superintendent. This is a decision that has wide-reaching and long-lasting impact. It's wide-reaching because last I checked, we have over 800, upwards of 800 employees in the Springfield School District that this individual would be responsible for, and it's long-lasting in that our last superintendent was in this position for close to 10 years. And so I'm sure we all agree that we want to find the best candidate for this position, someone who has an eye on the current needs and future needs of the students in our district. And frankly, I would not be surprised if that was in fact Mr. Rizzo, because Mr. Rizzo, you have done a phenomenal job leading this district, especially since Dr. Gooden's absence. And with all of this said, it would be a dereliction of this board's responsibilities not to put, should we move forward with this approach, not to put Mr. Rizzo up against any other candidates, because up until two weeks ago, there was an understanding with this community that the board would be partnering with the IU to go through the process of trying to find the best talent. And so the motion that was made at the last board meeting, in the manner in which it was, is simply careless, to have no executive, prior executive conversation, and to have it not reflect on the agenda is careless, because our public looks at these agendas to make informed decisions as to whether or not they want to attend in advance, and whether or not they want to make comment, public comment, in advance. And so, Mr. Clinton, I respectfully disagree. Just because strict legal procedure is followed, doesn't make it right. Just because you can do something, doesn't mean you should. And I want to thank Dr. Wright for being the lone dissenting voice at the board meeting two weeks ago, because I know it's not easy to always stand up for what you believe in when you hear overwhelming majority opposition, and so thank you for that.
I'm going to have to respectfully disagree also. I felt that in the last 15 months, as Mr. Fitzgerald has pointed out, this board, we have struggled, we have struggled to be the leaders that Springfield knows us to be. We have struggled with so many different aspects. And yes, COVID-related, and how do we respond? Do we react, are we proactive? That was a motion that was made, which can be made, as Mr. Jackson pointed out, and it should have been made. Why should we be wasting any more of the taxpayers' dollars, any more resources, any more time or effort on looking for what it is that we have? And I feel very firmly about that, I feel strongly about that. I also stated very openly that I would not be the one to make a motion, because I work in sync with Mr. Rizzo on many, many items, and I felt that I knew him maybe better than the other members of this board, so that I did not want to be the one to make the motion. But would I support it? 100%. If the board wanted to continue and go through the process, I would support that too. Not for a very high fee, as some of the firms had offered, but the IU would have been less money. There, there was though still resources attached to that. There were advertising costs, there was time and effort and resources that our personnel would have had to dedicate to going through that process. So if we know that that's not where we're going, I felt that was the right decision to make and not to waste time and resources looking outside of that. How did I know that? I felt that way, and I thought that way from my experience, but it was also indicative of the lack of response from other board members when feedback was solicited by our HR director and by Mrs. Fern on multiple occasions. The feedback that came in was very limited and only provided a little bit of direction. We needed a lot more than that, and it wasn't forthcoming. So when the motion was made, I was very happy to hear it, and I was very supportive of it, and I stand by that position 100%.
My only comment to this, and this is what I love. I love that the community comes out and they engage with the board. I'm not a Zoom person, I don't like email, I like to deal face-to-face. So with that being said, each individual at this table made a conscious choice to run for school board, or they allowed someone to talk them into it, which is a whole separate story. Each individual at this board got petition signed. Each member of this board went through the entire process of being elected to school board. We are nine individuals of a conforming, conforming board. There is a president and a vice president, and then at the end of the day, they facilitate a meeting. There is one vote per person. So there's no one here that has pixie dust, or put someone in a trance, or forced someone to vote. And the last time I checked, the vote was eight to one. So my point is, if you look at it from that analysis, the board voted where they wanted to go. The same way Dr. Wright stood up and shook her fist or shook her hand. Any other board member could have done that. Any other board member could have voted no. Any other board member could have tabled the vote. So when you look at the vote being eight to one, that says something, it has substance. It wasn't a five to four vote, it was an eight to one vote. So I look at it from that perspective, of simple logic and analysis, is that, that is the direction that the board wanted to go.
Yeah, I, I find it really interesting, and, and thank you for your comments too, that this is not really supposed to be a back and forth. This is an opportunity for the community to make their comments, and yet we hear people say all kinds of things, and this is the thing that, that, you know, it, that we choose to dwell on. You know, you took another opportunity to explain why you felt that you needed to vote the way you did. That wasn't her point, right? The community member's point was that she thought, she was expressing her point of view about the way it was presented. And she validated your comment about it being legal. She just was expressing her point of view that it is, if it's on the agenda, it is better for the community, and then, and that was it. But this is something that, you know, it, it's not a back and forth, and frequently, community members say all kinds of things that we don't, we don't have, feel that it needs to be a discussion on, you know. But this was it, this is what you chose to.
I agree with Dr. Wright, and this is, we've said, every board meeting I've been to, this is not a Q and I. It's a board comment, it's a community comment, time to make a comment. They have questions, they need to be submitted, I suppose, in writing ahead of time or addressed to an administrative person. I suppose, in writing ahead of time or addressed to an administrative person who can answer their question. We established forever, this is not a Q and A.
I think that when we were in the thick of it, it was definitely not a Q and A. There were things coming at us from all different places. If you look back at the meetings, the last several meetings, Mr. Rizzo has responded to a number of inquiries that have been made. Board members have responded to a number of inquiries that can be, that have been made. If there is an answer to a question, I don't see a reason to withhold that. No, we're not going to invite Ms. Hermans back up to the microphone. We're not going to engage and go back and forth. And I believe she understands that. But if there is a response, I think it is okay to do that. When we were in the thick of it, I don't think it was. Climate has changed.
She didn't ask a question, though. She was just stating her opinion. I agree that if there's a question that Mr. Rizzo can answer.
So are we good to move on? I think we've heard a public comment. Folks have responded to it. Do we have five board members who agree that it's, we should move on?
We should move on.
No.
So if we have a majority of five or more, then we will move on. Are there any public comments on Zoom at this time?
Rich, do you have anything else? I'm sorry, I didn't see. But we are actually, okay, yes, we have not gone to the Zoom yet. So yes, we'll go ahead.
Abby Deardorff, 204 Collin Court in Royersford. Since there has been multiple administrative updates regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion, I know this is not a Q and A forum, but I was wondering if feedback could be provided to the community why a Black Lives Matter sticker is inappropriate, or if that's what the district feels. Thank you.
If I could, could I give a comment on that?
I answered the question to the gentleman. I'm the one that said I find that it should be removed. Yes, I said that. Any other political or sticker of controversy should not be posted anywhere in school. The same way I said with a Confederate flag or if it's a bumper sticker of Black Lives Matter, BLM, it shouldn't be on school property anymore than a political sign should be on school property.
I understand where you're coming from, but there was a statement saying that it's unconstitutional. According to Tinker versus Des Moines, 1969, it is not unconstitutional. In court cases ruling the First Amendment in public schools, any school official cannot censor student speech unless it's registered to the education system, which right now it is not.
I don't think it was a speech. It was a bumper sticker.
Any form of protest, including like armbands and stuff, because Tinker versus Des Moines was an armband situation.
Hey, so this is a great conversation, but I reiterate that in the past that there were other stickers or other things like, like Mr. Jackson mentioned, a Confederate flag that was removed. If you allow one, and this was the position all along, if you allow one, you have to allow them all. So as soon as you, as soon as you cross that line and say, "This one is okay, but this one is not," and you could be 100 reasons why that's the case. But as soon as you allow one type of group or presentation of some form of this, then you have to allow them all. So that means, and that's from what I understand, Mr. Fitzgerald could correct me or am I wrong, but we've tried to limit that throughout the years as far as this expression in the halls and that what's taught in across classrooms is curriculum-based, but things just can't appear in the hallways. There was other things that have been removed over the years because it goes back to, again, once you allow one, you can't pick and choose the flavor of the month and say, "This one's allowed, but I don't like that one, so that one has to come down."
I think we should caution on discussing this information until we actually get a fuller background. I would, I would ask that the nine of you stay viewpoint-neutral on all of this, and we'll look at what, what the information suggests, and certainly, as an update is warranted, that'll be provided.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Any other public comments in the room? And moving on to the Zoom, Rich, comments?
Jennifer Brown, please unmute yourself, state your full name and address and your public comment to be heard.
Hi, Jennifer Brown, 4 Ashford Way, Scheningsville. I would like to take this in a really positive direction and express my support and thanks for the progress being made on the formation of a special education parent advisory committee or alliance. A special education alliance is a win-win situation for parents, students, and the school district. It will facilitate positive communication, collaboration, parent training, and self-advocacy skills for students. I've been involved in a special education alliance in another state and another school district, and I saw firsthand all of the benefits. Parents in Springfield are interested and enthusiastic about this possibility. So I'd like to thank Mr. DiBello for bringing this to the board, Mr. Rizzo for being open to the possibility, and Ms. Davis for all the work that she's done so far. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have other comments? Go ahead.
Ruth Hanson, please state your full name and address and your public comment to be heard. Unmute yourself, please.
Yep, Ruth Hanson. I'm at 84 Bartlett Drive in Scheningsville. And yes, I would also like to voice my support for the formation of the Special Education Alliance, the Parent Advisory Committee. It sounds like a lot of plans have already been made and are in the works, and that's very exciting to hear. It's going to provide an excellent forum for communication between special needs families and district administration. It's going to be a very valuable resource for families and educators throughout the district. Thank you to Tom DiBello for listening to our needs and bringing it to the board, and to Mr. Rizzo and Katie Davis for all the work that has been done on it so far. I look forward to seeing more in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Morris, please state your full name and address and your public comment to be heard. Please unmute yourself.
Thanks, Kathy Morris, 420 Church Street in Royersford. Just like the last two callers, I want to thank Mr. Rizzo and his team for putting together some background work on having that Special Needs Parents Alliance. It's obviously going to be very helpful for the school, the community, and our whole demographic. And my other comment would be to, I guess, not challenge the administration, but maybe kind of give a heads up that I know a couple of parents have had talks with their IEP team regarding competitive education. And so far, I know I personally and another parent was told we haven't even started those evaluations yet to see if kids qualify. And that is something that, you know, we have state regulation about and whatnot. So I would just challenge them to kind of get the ball rolling on that because we don't really want to waste any more time for services that our kids have already lost, unfortunately due to the pandemic. Thank you so much.
Lee Anne Graham, please state your full name and address and your public comment to be heard. Please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Lee Anne Graham, 136 Oak Creek Drive, Limerick. I just want to echo the callers before me, Jen and Ruth. And first off, before that, I wanted to just thank the staff and teachers, the administration from the Special Ed Department. My daughter's in ninth grade, and I will say that the teachers and the administration went above and beyond this year for my daughter. I've been blown away with the amount of support that they've given her and the flexibility as she is high-risk. But the flexibility they've shown and have worked with me over the last year has been unbelievable. So I just wanted to, first off, say thank you. And second, I'll say thank you, Mr. Rizzo, for your report on the Parent Advisory Committee for the Special Ed, Mr. DiBello for bringing that to the board. It's been a long time coming. I think I've been asking about this for so many years. I know back in the website, probably a few years back, I asked about the special channel for this exact thing and have been told that had been retired for many years. So I'm really excited. I personally, I go to the Methacton Special Ed Alliance meetings, have found them so helpful over the years from training to conferences. They just had an incredible inclusion conference seminars for free to anybody in the area, their staff, parents. It was really awesome with Dr. Jenna Ruffo, Dr. Julie Costin about inclusion. So I'm really looking forward to having something from a parent advisory committee and training for Springfield. And I'm happy to volunteer in the focus groups with Mrs. Davis. So I'm looking forward to an update at future board meetings. And again, just commend Mr. Rizzo and Katie Davis for taking the lead on this. Thank you.
James Goldsmith, please state your full name and address and your public comment to be heard. At this time, there were no more hands raised.
Great, thank you, one and all. And is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I was just gonna say, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week that we didn't really mention.
Okay, well, we don't have a second. So we did periodically tonight thank the teachers, but if we could officially acknowledge those, you know, and all of their efforts just in a normal year and beyond.
Well, I mean, we have an amazing staff here, and what they've done, like you said, not only this past year, but as I mentioned earlier, with our national rankings and all that and all the hard work, it's definitely demonstrated that it's paying off for everything that they do for our students. They definitely go beyond the Call of Duty, as well as Mr. Schaefer mentioning the 56-plus teachers that are going to work this summer in this program, which is just amazing itself because at first, we didn't know how many teachers we're going to get, and that's 56 to step up. We should be able to really make a good headway on the number of our students that we could touch this summer as far as addressing some of this learning loss that may, may, may not have occurred. So this is, this is really great. Like I said, we have a, it's a great staff here, and I just want to make sure that we point that out. And, you know, during appreciation, this week is national recognition for our police. And as Springfield, we have a great, great school police department. Huh? And school nurses. I mean, this is. And property. Well, property committees. But I mean, we, you know, a couple of years ago, we started out to create one of the top-notch police, school police departments in the state, and we have done that. And Chief Boyer and his team have done an amazing job. They're well-respected within the community. All of the adjoining, the boroughs, the townships that they work with, the police departments they work with, the kids, the students, they love their presence in the buildings. They've made a positive impact. So we just have an amazing staff within our police, and as well as with our nursing, as Ms. Smith mentioned, that we're up to 18. And they, you know, we should give a special recognition to them as well because over this last year, not only do they have worked extremely hard over, you know, prior years, but this last year, they really stepped up and took on the challenge and helped us navigate through some of these interesting times and provided the protocols and the policies and procedures to ensure that we're able to, you know, take care of our students, make sure that any contact tracing was done. It was done efficiently and very effectively, as well as working with Mr. Rizzo to work through the processes and procedures that when we had positive cases within these buildings, we got to the point where we didn't have to close the building because they got very efficient in doing all the contact tracing necessary and working with Mr. Rizzo, making sure all the cleaning, everything was done so that we could keep the buildings open. So they've been a tremendous asset as well, and I think that's why we, as a board, agreed to add additional staff. And so it's really, I mean, it's just amazing what we're doing here at Springfield. So I just wanted to take a couple of minutes to make all that recognition.
And it's all of these pieces together that has us where we are right now. So, and it starts with you, Mr. Rizzo, that's up right now. So, thank you.
Second.
Did you second? Okay, we're done.